Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to have you here this evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I would just ask that everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, if you could call the roll of members, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Ballantyne.
Here.
Ms. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Grupera.
Here.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Here.
Mr. Soto. And President Reichenbach.
Here. Counselor Soto is excused for the evening. Approval of the minutes for the November 26, 2019, meeting.
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. Move on to Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition. Do we have any this evening, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's move into our first public comment, period. This is reserved for citizens who've contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting to request the opportunity to address city council. I would ask that you limit the duration of your comments to three minutes. Mr. Harris, do we have anybody who called ahead this evening?
Yes, we do, Mr. President. First is Eileen Gregg.
Great. Ms. Gregg. Good evening. If you're able, Ms. Gregg, or if somebody could grab the microphone, just pull it down for you, so that we can talk into it. We want to make sure we can hear you.
Thank you. I am Eileen Gregg, and I reside at 118 North Water Street in Lancaster.
Can you pull it down a little bit more, April? Just a... Thank you. Sorry about that. We just want to be able to hear you.
I'm accustomed, as I am, to public speaking, as they say.
You're fine. You're fine. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Eileen Gregg, and I reside at 118 North Water Street in Lancaster. Before this meeting started, you may have been handed a picture of a modern, 40-foot-tall sculpture named Big Bling, recently installed in the city of North Adams in the state of Maine. Sent to me by a friend is a massive elfentine-like figure with a strange-looking headpiece. "installed without much input," my friend wrote of this imaginary creature. I would expect that it is the source of many jokes, but I doubt if anybody is complaining. That is because it was installed on private land and was paid for with private money. Lancaster's Big Bling, that is R&amp;R's facade project for the library garage in Yule Plaza, on the other hand, will be installed on public land, and it will be financed with public money in the form of a municipal bond. Although I don't know who approved Big Bling for the city of North Adams, I do know who approved the art project for Yule Plaza. So, who selected it? I asked that question of Laurie Cohen, executive director of the municipal parking garage in Yule Plaza, where it will be installed. He answered, and I quote, "City council provided approval for the project with the contingency of extended public outreach for feedback and input on the conceptual design from R&amp;R Studios, the Public Art Advisory Board's chosen vendor and design."
Aye.
End of quote. So Lancaster's Big Bling was selected by the Public Art Advisory Board for the city of Lancaster. Who or what is this board? I looked it up in the city's website, and this is what I found. The board consists of six volunteer members appointed by the mayor with the consent of city council. All members are residents of the city of Lancaster. So, a board of volunteer members, none of whom are city employees, under the leadership of Joanna Davis, who also is not an elected official, but rather a city employee, were allowed to choose R&amp;R Design of Miami, Florida, as the vendor for the largest and most expensive public art project in the city's history. And not only that, but to select the design of the public art project. That G.A. Hawthorne, in a December 4 letter to the editor, said, and I quote, "Looks like a big box of crayons entirely appropriate for a Crayola factory, but not for Lancaster." End of quote. And this board of six volunteers headed by Joanna Davis, a salaried city employee, was permitted to choose a public art project for a seven-story building that this city of nearly 60,000 residents will be looking at for at least the next 20 or 30 years, long after Ms. Davis has gone on to better things. The resolution which was approved included a requirement that a representative of R&amp;R must visit Lancaster City at least three times next year to garner public input. The resolution for approval included a requirement, end of quote, "for extended public outreach." End quote. The next day, I emailed Ms. Davis, asking, "What can be changed and what has to stay the same?" Her reply, and I quote, "The only thing that must stay the same about the conceptual design is the material and how it is attached to the building. So the formal composition and any finishing treatment to the aluminum, that is, what is painted on it, is subject to change." End of quote. Ms. Davis says that the material, in this case, the aluminum tubing, plus the way it is fastened to the building, that is, with hooks embedded in the wall's surface, must stay the same. What we, the public, are allowed to decide is whether the tubing is arranged horizontal, vertical, or perhaps in a circular pattern, plus what is painted onto the tubing. That's it.
I don't want to interrupt, Ms. Gregg, but if you could just finish up.
Excuse me. Okay.
Sure.
I brought with me a show-and-tell... I'm almost done. A plain gingerbread man with no decorations on it at all. City council, and now Mr. Cohen of the Parking Authority, is telling the public that pay their salaries that we have no choice of the kind of cookie. We are allowed to decorate it. So what if the public doesn't like gingerbread? What if we want oatmeal cookies instead? Can we have something entirely different from the R&amp;R design? Maybe a design from one of our local architects or artists? Can we have it? The city is telling us it has to be the R&amp;R design. It can't be any local company, says the city. R&amp;R makes a cookie, and we get to decorate it. I want to thank Janet Diaz and President Reichenbach for going against big business and supporting the citizens of this community, the majority of which say they don't want our versions of Big Bling. This was shown in two polls, one conducted by Lancaster Online and a former one conducted by our excellent city reporter with Lancaster newspapers. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for sharing. Mr. Harris, do we have anyone else who called ahead?
Yes, Mr. President, we do.
Oh.
I wonder you.
Are they edible, or are they just for show? Figured I'd ask. The president's taste tester. That's wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Harris, do we have someone who called ahead?
Yes, we do, Mr. President. Next is April Copenheber.
Great. It's Copenheber.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity. I actually want to say thank you first, because I have a building on West King Street, and there are boulevards lights on West King Street. A tree got planted outside my building, and also the reeds look beautiful, and they're lighting very nicely, so thank you very much for that. Let's see. I wanted to ask you a question before I really get started. Do you know why there's so many churches in the city of Lancaster? And we all agree there's almost a church on every street. Does anyone know? Well, I was lucky enough to have a senior at Lancaster Catholic who hated reports, so I got special permission that he would read to me, and then I'd ask him questions, and I might write it, but he would type it. Anyway, it was all within his words, but we discovered the answer to this. And actually, it was our city forefathers decided to give away three plots of ground to every denomination, and the three plots of ground were for the church, for the residents, for the priest, rabbi, or minister to live, and one was for a cemetery. And their forward thinking actually dictated to us what is now our city of neighborhoods, okay? And they figured that the church was such an integral part of each person's family that if the church came to this city, then the neighborhoods would be built as well, which is what truly happened and followed. And I'm saying that because it's truly today what distinguishes us from Reading, York, and Harrisburg, correct? We all agree with that. We have a city of neighborhoods. So what I'm actually addressing is the opportunity that this board, as the future of forefathers, right, in generations to come, are making decisions that will affect us for many, many years. And I'm specifically addressing the plaza, which will now be named Yule Plaza. That was Mayor Monahan's debacle. That was his abomination, you might say, that the rest of us have lived with for 40-some years. And as a member of the art community... I forgot to say my name. I'm sorry. April, I'm Copenheber.
And your street, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Mulberry Street.
Thank you.
19-21 North Mulberry Street, and also 253-255 West King Street.
Thank you.
I've been a citizen, tax-paying citizen, of the city of Lancaster since 1980. And even as an art organization, I always chose to pay my city, my school, and my property tax, as well as my county tax, because I didn't want to be having my life around developing grants. I wanted to be independent and self-sufficient and sustaining. So that is held true. We're in year 32. So now, when we're talking about Yule Plaza and the public art project, I did go to the city's organizational chart, and the first people that have a say in what's happening in the city are the residents of the city. And then, under that, we have the office of the mayor, we have city council, city treasurer, and city comptroller. And under the office of the mayor, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five blocks down, is Office of Public Art. Now, what I think has been transpiring is that the actual chart that was agreed upon and on city council's or the mayor's budget is that it's upside down at this point. Now, the public art department is actually working with the mayor, and then it becomes known to the city residents. So I'm just saying that something topsy-turvy has occurred. I have researched R&amp;R's company, and there are other cities that have stood up against their projects, and the one says Boulder officials say no to big red yes. The R&amp;R, same company that is being foisted upon us, they chose to say yes in big red letters in the Boulder's public library windows, okay? So it was red yes and an exclamation point, and the city residents started clamor about it, very similar to what we are saying. And we found out that the city project manager, Boulder city manager, and will not sign the contract for a controversial public art project at the main public library, she told city council on Tuesday night. And this was back in 2014. You can see it. It's online. You can look it up for yourselves. Many people were upset with the art. They did not feel it reflected our community, and they felt it was a mistake. The woman's name is Brodagen, said she will not sign the contract for the artwork, and there will be a new process to choose public art for the library after the completion of a community cultural plan. We will defer that until we have a policy in place that reflects our community values. They're going to sit on it, and they did not put the public art from R&amp;R in place until they got more public opinion. And that was for $150,000. Other comments that the city and Boulder residents said, "We are both appalled. We just couldn't believe that Boulder was stooping to doing something like that." At a time, it was a big moment for a city working to revamp its cultural programs. And then, they actually had 360 entries that they had looked at. I understand that the Public Art, PAAB, Public Art Advisory Board, looked at five that were recommended from a paid consultant, and out of the five, I still have yet to see what they looked like. And I've still not been told, and I've requested this through right-to-know, what the other three firms were, because all we were told is they're picking R&amp;R. Now, I want to go back to the documentation. It says Lancaster Public Art has a 10-year plan, and this was written in 2017, so not too long ago, and supposed to lead us to 2027. The first one is Goal One, Equity. Every community in Lancaster will have opportunities to collaborate with artists on projects in the public ground. I feel absolutely that was violating. Under equity, it says, "Empower local artists by developing resources to keep them informed of opportunities and by helping them develop skills to compete for public art projects." Here was one in our backyard, and they were never invited to come to the party.
I don't want to interrupt, April. If you can just finish up your point.
Number two, I only have three more things, because there's only three goals in this. Number two is livability. Public art contributes to Lancaster's sense of community, livability, creativity, and character. I feel that's been violated, because all of us feel excluded, and something is being jammed down our throat and up another orifice. So we disregard this project as fact and equitable. Number three, excellence. Public art initiatives in Lancaster are guided by artistic excellence and sincere community participation. I can't understand how... I mean, excuse me, Izzy, but you could look at this and feel that you have served us as our representative and also on the board of the PAAB. I do appreciate your willingness to have us speak yesterday. I really sincerely do, and I appreciate the chairwoman's flexibility with her timeframe. We did have a very important... There were over...
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but I need you to finish up, just so other people can have the opportunity to speak.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand, and here, this was also a document about public art, and it said, "Mayor Sarasi understands how public art can be a powerful tool for connecting us and encouraging broader civic engagement. The city of Lancaster Office of Public Art finds opportunities for art to augment initiatives that fuel the mayor's four focus areas. Strong neighbors, safe spaces, secure incomes, and sound government." So, and I do appreciate you as our mayor, I do. But I just question what words are being put in documents and then what the actions are. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, April. Mr. Harris, who do we have next who called ahead?
Mr. President, next we have Maurya Jean Fitzgerald.
I don't think I saw her.
And last, we have Thomas Schusenzuber.
Well, you get the chance to pronounce it.
My name is Thomas Schuykenzuber. Bavarian, unless you use German, you won't be able to say it.
Please say it again, because it's just...
Schuykenzuber. The EU...
Lift the mic up.
Oh.
Yeah. Lift up.
Okay. The EU is basically an O-Y in English, so Schuykenzuber. Schuykenzuber.
As a Reichenbach, I appreciate it sincerely. Yes.
The reason I'm here...
And just sorry, the street you're from. Just your street. The street you live on.
The name of your street?
Oh, 521 St. Joseph's Street.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. The reason I'm here is because I have an issue, and maybe it's appropriate for me to be here, maybe it isn't. One of your inspectors came out, I think it was in February, basically, and previously, he sent me a letter in regard to a retaining wall, which was basically separating my property from both 520 West Vine Street, and also there was another retaining wall separating 520 West Vine Street from 519 St. Joseph's Street. The owner of 520 West Vine Street has admitted that the retaining wall, at least in my regard to my property, is his responsibility to get replaced. And my reason why I'm here is why what he wants to put in place is why I'm here. He wants to put in Jersey barriers and just stick them in the ground and call that a retaining wall. And I find that totally unacceptable. I don't know what you think about that. I looked at the building code, and I could find very little about retaining walls in the building code for the overall city. If there's anything you could do to change what it is, maybe limit it somewhat, they say you have to put either in what was in there previously, if there was a cement wall in there previously, and there was actually, there was a fence on top of it, built right into the wall. I'd be happy just to have the, you know, a cement barrier put back in like it was, but putting a Jersey barrier in there, to me, is totally unacceptable. But that's what the owner wants to do. It's an ombudsman who wants to do it.
I'm sorry, just a point of curiosity. Is it like a concrete or a plastic Jersey barrier? What's amazing?
He didn't put it in yet. He wants to put it in. He hasn't done it yet, okay? Basically, he was supposed to have this done a long time ago.
Why has he proposed a material, just so I...
He didn't say what material it would be at this point.
So I would really appreciate having your phone number given to Bernie Harris, the city clerk at the far end, and our inspector, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, whose department this would fall in, is sitting back here. And we can follow up with you to find out more about the situation, and if our inspectors have been out, we have photographs, and we'll be able to follow up with you quickly. So, Chris.
I'm the director. If you would give your number to Mr. Harris, I'll make sure I get it. And then I...
Bernie is right there. Oh, you're Bernie. Okay. I'll get you then.
And we will follow up. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, sir. We'll definitely follow up with you on that. Okay, Mr. Harris, do we have anybody else who's called ahead this evening?
No, we do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. Reports requested by council. I don't believe we have any advance reports representative of council.
We do not.
We will move right into reports of committees of council meetings that were held on December 2, 2019. I would assume also on December... What would that have been now?
7.
7, 2019, as well. Public Safety Report Committee, or, excuse me, Public Safety Committee, Counselor Soto. For him, I do not believe he had a report this evening. We'll move to Public Works Committee, Counselor Grupera.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were four resolutions brought up to committee and passed unanimously and are on the agenda tonight. First, Resolution Number 66 is appointing a Director of Public Works. Administration Resolution Number 67, authorizing application for a PAH2O program grant for wastewater treatment plant improvements. Resolution Number 68, authorizing application for a PAH2O program grant for wastewater collection system improvements. And Administration Resolution Number 69, authorizing application for PAH2O program grant for water membrane replacement. And we will discuss those in more detail when they come up on the agenda. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Move into Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had nothing on the agenda.
Thank you. Move on to Finance Committee with Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance had a lot to discuss last at our committee meeting. Primarily, our discussion centered around the overview presentation of the proposed 2020 budget, where the following highlights were conveyed. 2020 combined general fund and associated budgets total $123,222,850. Regarding the general fund total, that's $62.7 million, counting for 51% of the total combined. Some of those highlights include no real estate tax increase proposed, lead poisoning prevention program funded by a $9.7 million HUD grant to begin in 2020, and purchase of streetlights from PPL is in final stages and expected to save the city $455,500 annually. In regards to stormwater management fund, that's $4.3 million, 3% of the total combined. No stormwater rate increase proposed. Green infrastructure projects are continuing in compliance with the EPA consent decree. In regards to the sewer fund, that's $19.4 million, which is 16% of the total combined. Rate increase case before the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission is nearly complete. Rates for average residential customers inside the city are proposed to increase by $28.50 per quarter. Long-term bulk sewer village dispute with East Lampeter and Lancaster area Sewer Authority has been resolved, resulting in improved cash flows for the city, and mandated planning and projects are continuing in compliance with the EPA consent decree. In regards to the water fund, $31.8 million, which is 26% of the total combined. A rate increase case before the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission will be filed in 2020. Rates for average residential customers inside the city are proposed to increase by $17.70 per quarter. And in regards to solid waste and recycling, which is $5 million, about 4% of the total combined, a rate increase of $5 per quarter is proposed for all customers, which are impacted by changes in recycling rules and uncertainty in the global recycling market, and a new hauler contract will be bid in 2020. Other notable mentions from that presentation. Proposed 2020 general fund budget has a $1.76 million, which is also a 2.89% increase in spending compared to 2019, with almost all amounting to salary increases. This nominal increase succeeds in meeting the goal of keeping the annual city expense growth at less than 3%. It was announced that the city will establish a utility assistance program to be done in conjunction with the Community Action Program of Lancaster, with $50,000 budgeted by the city and matched by nonprofit organizations and foundations. This program, to be administered by CAP, will help to avoid water service termination to customers who are unable to pay water bills and reduce the risk of people becoming homeless as a result of unpaid water and sewer bills. Additionally, CAP will provide other services to help water customers become financially stable. Finally, the presentation ended with a five-year projection, which showed nearly $3 million coming from reserves in 2020 to balance the budget. For this year, the budget called for a $2.5 million use of reserves, however. Now, we're projecting to end the year with a $455,000 surplus, which increases the reserves to $14.3 million, or about 24% of the city general fund expenditures. The aforementioned highlights and other details were provided both at the committee meeting and during the Saturday budget meeting, also where several departments shared accomplishments from the year that was and upcoming plans for 2020. In addition to that, there were two resolutions and two bills, two of which were on the docket for this evening for first reading, and then two more for next Tuesday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Ballantyne. Quite a busy week, for sure. Thank you. Move on to Community Development and Planning Committee, Counselor Smith-Wadeell.
I don't believe we met at the last committee meeting, President Reichenbach, so I have no report.
Thank you. And last, but not least, as always, Personnel Committee, Counselor Diaz.
Yes, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, December 2, and interviewed Laura Proctor, whom the mayor has nominated for the Downtown Investment District Authority Board. The committee also reviewed a reappointment for Nancy Neff, Crystal Weaver, and Alicia Byler for the Downtown Investment District Authority Board. Their terms will be from December 31, 2019, to December 31, 2024, and I'd like to make a motion to approve these appointments.
So moved. Motion and a second. Other council comments? I just want to thank those that are in the audience, whose names were just mentioned. Thank you for serving. I know it's not always easy, and I know you're busy, very busy, and it's extremely helpful to have people step up to the plate and help, especially people as qualified as you. So thank you. Thank you very much. It's appreciated. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye.
And we also discussed Administration Resolution Number 70, 2019, approving an appointment of the city solicitor introduced by myself and originated by the mayor. And I'm not sure if Patrick would like to come up and discuss that and...
Yep. If it's okay, we'll wait until the agenda comes up.
And we also have Resolution 70 on 2019, which is also going to be discussed later.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. We'll move right into legislative agenda. The historic district considered the following application and recommendation from the Historic Architectural Review Board for improvements to a property within the historic district. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. We have one tonight. James Albright and Kim Rankin, owners of 25 North Shippen Street, requesting closure of a second-story rear porch visible from East Grand Street and Hensel Alley. And that application was recommended for approval by the Historical Architectural Review Board.
I have a motion to approve. I hear a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris. You want to comment on the porch? I didn't mean that rhetorically. I mean, please, by all means, if you have a comment about the rear visible porch.
He says request for vision of the porch, but they tell you what's the reason why, or just asking for it?
A member of the public doesn't have to give us a reason why they want to do something on the porch. It's within the rules. They're allowed to do that.
25 North Shippen Street we live at. Then it's gone from East Grand Street to the alleyway. Which way is it going from? On Grand Street or where?
It's a porch. It's just a porch facing on the back of their property.
Yeah, but he said it's a second-story porch.
Correct. So, coming off the second story. So, like a balcony porch coming off the back.
I gotta go down and see it, then I know.
Well, if you take some good pictures, feel free to bring them back. Thank you.
The way he said it, right? It does sound right.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. The next two are ordinances for first reading, so we will not be motioning on these this evening. They will simply be read into the record. We'll start with ordinance for first reading, Administration Bill Number 19, 2019.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, amending Section 29558 and 29560 of the Code of the City of Lancaster to change the water rates for customers within city limits effective January 1, 2020, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
So, again, we won't be voting on this this evening. Council Ballantyne, is there anything else you want to add other than your committee report on this?
No.
We will have a second reading next Tuesday. Would that be the 17th? Yes, it all runs together around Christmas. We will be having a second reading and most likely a vote that evening on this issue. We'll move to another item for first reading, Administration Bill Number 20, 2019.
An ordinance providing for tax exemption for certain improvements to deteriorated properties, residential deteriorated property, commercial deteriorated property, mixed use and new construction of residential structures, and deteriorated areas pursuant to Pennsylvania Acts Number 42 of 1977 and 76 of 1977, defining certain exempt property, providing for the exemption period, and establishing a schedule of percentage exemptions for that time period.
Thank you. Council Ballantyne.
Provide more details next week. Thank you.
Great. So, again, we will be voting on this issue as well when it comes up on the agenda on the 17th. We'll move into resolutions at this point in the agenda, all of these which will most likely be voted on this evening. Let's start with Administration Resolution Number 66, 2019, approving the appointment of the Public Works Director.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, approving the appointment of a Director of the Department of Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council Grupera.
Thank you, Mr. President. As with all department directors, they're appointed with the approval of City Council. Stephen Campbell currently works for Washington DC government. His appointment follows a national search.
Great. Thank you. Mayor, do you want to add anything at this point?
With council's vote this evening, we are moving ahead with the orientation with Mr. Campbell and, again, contingent on tonight's vote, I expect that Mr. Campbell will be traveling to the City of Lancaster on Friday to meet staff at the holiday luncheon.
Terrific. And if I'm not mistaken, this completes your executive team, your leadership team. I see the smile on your face from here. That's terrific. All right. Any other comments from council? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
President Reichenbach.
Aye. Move on to Administration Resolution Number 67, 2019, authorizing application for a PA H2O program grant for wastewater treatment plant improvements.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster requesting a H2O PA grant of $3,230,000, I'm sorry, $231,000, the Commonwealth Financing Authority, to be used for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council Ballantyne. Or, excuse me, Council Grupera.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have Council Ballantyne on the brain. Sorry, you just had so much going on, Council Ballantyne.
You'll be back to him.
I will be. Council Grupera.
Since the next three resolutions involve grants and local matching funds, I think I'm going to punt to Mr. Hopkins and let him give us a little detail on those.
I had a feeling that might happen, so I brought my paperwork.
Thought we were going to get through a whole meeting without Mr. Hopkins, but yet here he is.
Sad to say, that didn't happen. So, Resolution Number 67, 68, and 69, as Councilor Grupera said, are all grant applications for the same, from the same grant resource through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The Number 67, the grant request itself, is $3,230,100. The city's match would be $1,000,000, total project cost of $2,000,000. And the city match there would be from bond funds from the 2018 bond issue. So, this was a project that we had established in the 2018 capital improvement plan project list, and we're hoping to get grant funds to offset a large portion of the cost.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
I figure I'll just hang out up here.
Might as well.
Why not?
Any other comments from council? From the public? I just want to say before we vote, thank you again to the mayor and your department heads, and not just your department heads, but your staff, who've put so much work into these grant applications. It's clear that you do a ton of work, and Patrick talked about it at our meeting. It pays off for the residents, tens of millions of dollars, I would think, over the course of a year, several years. That's probably a conservative number when it comes to all the money that we've gotten from grants. Certainly pays off. The hard work pays off. So, thank you for that. I have no other comments. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. Let's move right to Administration Resolution Number 68, 2019, authorizing application for a PA H2O program grant for wastewater collection system improvements.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster requesting a PA, an H2O PA grant of $1,600,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the collection system improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council Grupera.
Mr. Hopkins.
Okay. So, Resolution Number 68, again, the same grant resource, the H2O grant through the Commonwealth. This project, the grant request is for $1.6 million. The city match would be for $800,000 for a total project cost of $2.4 million. And this is for collection system improvements, so underground collection system work along Mill Street and also Grant Street.
Great. Council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. Administration Resolution Number 69, 2019, authorizing application for a PA H2O program grant for a water membrane replacement project.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster requesting an H2O PA grant of $2,305,500 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the membrane replacement at the Susquehanna Water Treatment Plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council Grupera.
And one more time.
Very nice.
Okay. So, this is the third one. Again, same grant funding through the Commonwealth, $2,305,500 from the Commonwealth with a city match requirement of $1,152,750. This is for replacement of the membranes at the Susquehanna Water Treatment Plant. We are currently replacing the membranes. This is the system that treats our water. We're currently replacing them at the Conestoga Water Treatment Plant. We installed the new membranes when we rebuilt the two plants at Conestoga and Susquehanna in 2000, and we went live in 2010. They were expected to last about 10 years, and that's about the length that they've lived. So, the Conestoga Water Treatment Plant is being replaced now, and that's being done with 2018 water bond funds. This would be the, this is, the Susquehanna Treatment Plant is much larger than the Conestoga Plant, so there's a larger cost here. This is a project in the 2018 bond fund, but obviously, if we can get grant funds to offset a large portion of the cost, we want to do that, and so that's what the application is for.
Thank you. Council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. Hold tight there, Mr. Hopkins.
I'll stay up here for these.
Terrific. Administration Resolution Number 70, 2019, approving the appointment of the city solicitor.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster approving the appointment of the solicitor for the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council Diaz.
It's not me. Okay, so Resolution Number 70 is actually somewhat similar to the resolution that you adopted earlier, approving Stephen Campbell's appointment of the City Public Works Director. The city has long had a contract with a law firm. That's very distracting.
This makes me so happy to watch you fumble through this. I just want you to know that.
Zimmerman, Fennebecker, Nuffert, and Albert have served as the city solicitor since 2006 as an appointed law firm. During 2019, the mayor made the move to bring Barry Handwerker, who had been done the majority of the solicitor work in-house. So, he's been serving in that capacity in-house, but still is a partner in that law firm since the beginning of March. This is the sort of last step in that... To be the in-house city solicitor, but as a full-time city employee, and this resolution is approving that appointment.
Thank you. Council comments? I just want to, again, thank the mayor and Patrick and all those who were involved in this. Mr. Handwerker has certainly been a great help to me and other council members since he's been on board. I know it comes as no surprise to members of the public, there's a lot of technical stuff that we deal with all the time, and it is a tremendous help to the residents of the city to have somebody on staff that's able to look after our interests and have them at a moment's notice. It has been a real help to have somebody of his quality there.
One other thing I should point out is the, with this appointment, the general fund portion, or the general fund solicitor budget is actually reduced by about $116,000 in 2020 versus 2019. So, this isn't just a, you know, an operational benefit, it's also a financial reduction.
Terrific. Thank you. Comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye.
I didn't want to mess that vote up, but it's also Barry's birthday, so that was a nice birthday.
Oh, Barry.
Happy birthday.
62, huh? Let him know. I said, congratulations. Council Resolution Number 71, 2019, approving the appointment of special counsel for the city.
Patrick?
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Harris.
I know you're excited.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, appointing special counsel for the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council Diaz.
Patrick, can you enlighten us?
Yes. Okay, so this is somewhat related to the Resolution Number 70. Neil Albert, who's named in this resolution to be appointed as special counsel, is also currently a partner at Zimmerman, Fennebecker, Nuffert, and Albert. He is leaving that firm and will be sole practitioner beginning in 2020. The city uses Neil mostly for issues related to litigation, so if something is actually moving toward trial, Neil gets involved and serves as the city's legal counsel in those cases. So, we had, because we had previously appointed Zimmerman, Fennebecker, Nuffert, and Albert as a city solicitor, and Neil was a partner. With him leaving, we have to have him appointed as an individual attorney versus the firm.
Thank you. Council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Greg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. I know that was a long time for you to stand. I hope you're doing okay with that. Well done. We will move on to the second public comment period. This is open for comments about issues that were not on tonight's agenda. I would ask that you limit the duration of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Good evening. If you could just share your name and the street you live on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Lourdes Garcia Frankie. I live in 133 Chester Street.
Thank you.
I don't speak Spanish. I speak Spanish.
It's okay.
Yo vine aqui porque nos llegó una carta de la ciudad del agua que si no contactamos a uno modelo de teléfono durante los próximos diez días, nos cortan el servicio del agua. Hemos estado llamando y no hemos recibido, no hemos podido contactar con ninguna persona. Mi preocupación es que yo tengo dos niños pequeños y yo tengo que viajar de emergencia a Puerto Rico y no sé cuánto me vaya a tardar en el proceso de regresar porque tengo una situación familiar. Permiso, podemos empezar de nuevo que voy a traducir lo que está diciendo. Okay. Mi nombre es Lourdes Garcia.
My name is Lourdes Garcia.
Y vivo en la 133 de la Chester Street.
And I live at 133 Chester Street.
Mi preocupación es que nos llegó una carta, una notificación.
My concern is I received a letter.
Donde dice que si no nos contactamos con la ciudad, con lo del agua.
If we don't contact the water department.
Nos cortan, nos cortan el servicio del agua.
Or we will have a water shut off.
Mi esposo llamó ayer.
My husband called yesterday.
Y no pudo hacer contacto.
He's been, he wasn't able to contact.
Yo hice lo mismo hoy.
She, I did the same today.
Y la máquina nos mandó a un voicemail.
And she was sent a voicemail.
Mi preocupación es que dentro de los próximos días.
I'm concerned in the next few days.
Yo tengo que viajar a Puerto Rico.
I have to travel to Puerto Rico.
Y cuando regresen, no estoy, no, no, no voy a estar segura si voy a tener el servicio del agua.
When I return, I'm not sure if I will have water service.
Y tengo dos niños pequeños.
And I have two small children.
So, yo quiero saber a ver cómo ustedes pueden ayudar porque según soy yo.
I want to know how you can help me.
Hay otras personas más.
Just like me, there's others.
Mayor, would you like to take this? Because this is something to talk about.
Yes. So, thank you for coming tonight. I want to also thank Tenei and others who have been doing door-to-door in the rain to knock on neighbors' doors related to the water shut offs. to knock on neighbors' doors related to the water shut offs. We are, Millsy, would you mind translating? Just, and I'll stop, I'll stop and pause so that you can start there.
Quiero darle gracias a Tanei y otra gente que están en la vecindad ayudando, tocando en la puerta y hablando, comunicándose con la gente de la vecindad.
And I understand and appreciate that you made the calls like we asked you to.
Y yo entiendo y aprecio que hiciste la llamada como nosotros te preguntamos qué hiciera.
And if you have a few minutes since the meeting is ending soon, I'd like to talk with you specifically about your situation, your house, and just understand a little bit more.
Si tiene unos minutos después de la reunión, ella quiere hablar contigo, la caldeza quiere hablar contigo directamente sobre tu situación y, and how you want to just talk about the situation.
Yeah, just, you know, is she a tenant? Yeah, all of those details.
Si tu vivienda, si tu renta o si eres dueña de la casa, somos información sobre tu situación.
And Millsy, can you just add to? Thank you very much for coming. You're always welcome here. And thank you, and sorry that you're going through this, and we'll certainly work with you to figure it out, but you're always welcome to come. Thank you for taking the time.
Muchísimas gracias por venir y siempre tiene la bienvenida de venir aquí a estas reuniones.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Millsy.
And just thanks to everyone else who's helping to get the word out about the water meter shut offs. We, ninety percent of folks have responded. It's the last ten percent. And we also know that this is very detrimental to tenants, and we are working to take the burden off of them, although I understand that it is the, it is the tenants who ultimately are in jeopardy. And so we are in, we are in a very difficult situation to make this happen. And we also understand that we're entering into the holiday season. We want to make these, these free meter replacement happen. And we appreciate the community's help in getting us to the finish line. And with that, I will go into my report.
I just want to make sure, is there any other public comment before we move?
Oh, sorry.
Sure. Mr. Brown, and then we'll go with Ms. Jackson.
My name is Terry Brown. I live on West Chester Street. Now, I got definitely, is it for non-payment of the bill or what?
No, the, the issue is.
What's the reason of shutting the water off? That's why, I don't know what it is.
Do me a favor, can I answer you? So the reason for it is, we have to replace the old water meters because now they're going to be more efficient. We're going to be able to check them remotely, and when people have leaks, we're going to know instantaneously instead of days, weeks, or months later that could hurt them. So at a certain point, you have to have people get it done because we can't get the system up and running completely until everybody is finished. So the issue we're running into now is, we're getting near the end where there have been a lot of notices sent out, and for a lot of different reasons, some of whom aren't people's fault, we're running into a problem where people have not got it done yet. So now we have to get to a point where it has to be something done to be able to get it finished. One of those things is the water shut off. That's why we're working with people.
I'm going with it. I thought it was a bill. I said, is it a bill or not? But see, they don't know. That's why I say, I did not know, so I'm thinking it's a bill.
Sure. No, no bill.
But if it's not a bill, then I can go back and tell them the same thing, then I can raise the question to them.
Sure, yep, no bill. Just need to get it updated. Takes ten minutes, mayor, maybe, to get it in. It's a very quick process. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Jackson. Good evening. I think I've seen you around once or twice. You used to work here? I don't really recall.
I'm happy to see Tanei here. Very little.
If you want to pull the microphone out, Paula, just so everybody can hear you, you can pull it right down to here. Sorry, if it starts making noise, that's fine.
I knew Tanei when she was quite small. Last night I attended.
Sorry, I was, he's been around so long, I was actually going to answer that myself.
I live on South Mary Street since 1983 and grew up on the two and a block of West Chester Street and McKeskey graduate, Reynolds, Stevens, you know, a long, long time resident of the city. Last night I attended a standing room only public art advisory board meeting and was very impressed with the participation of the people that came. A number of artists spoke regarding their concern about no apparent outreach to local artists. And there was a question, I think Gina Lechi was asking this question about how was the decision made not to reach out to local artists? And a few of the local artists stood up and were questioned. I'm not an artist, but I was glad to hear the local artists did, you know, questioned why they were, they seemed to be excluded from the process. So I still think that's, that's a big concern. The response to Jean and councilman, perhaps you can correct me if I'm misinterpreting, what I thought the answer was, it appeared that city council had nothing to do with that decision to not include local artists in the outreach. And I, I am concerned because you are the elected officials, and there is an existing ordinance that gives the city council the final authority to approve the architectural design of new buildings. So I am concerned if council, as elected officials, had nothing to do with that decision not to reach out to local artists as part of the RFQ process. Just a little bit of my history, where I grew up, I witnessed the demolition of what became Lancaster Square. I used to go to the movies there. There were a lot of shops and, you know, three or four movie theaters. I remember my father crying as he watched the old Brunswick Hotel get demolished, because then Lancaster Square came along. The brutalist architectural style that was built was an immediate failure. Within, I'd say maybe two or three years, demolition of the eastern side of Lancaster Square occurred. Armstrong World Industry and I think it was National Central Bank were building new buildings there, and the concrete structure was in the way. And my former mayor referred to it as the concrete monstrosity. Now we're seeing the demolition of the balance of this brutalist architecture that was not done, not built with consideration of the architectural quality of the city of Lancaster. I believe it was a redevelopment authority decision, the city council at the time, the chief elected officials had nothing to do with approving that architectural design that was a failure from the beginning. And in some of you might remember, actually the concrete was falling off the bridge, you know, it was just a poor design. So my, my appeal to the council is to consider the role that you have, the responsibility. I know you, you acted on a very comprehensive amendment, most of you voted for it, to, you know, hold the existing, perhaps R and R, require them to undertake a lot of additional steps. But if it can be suspended as a process to allow local architects, or local artists to participate, I think it would be well received by the local art community. Right now, they're, they're feeling left out of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Do you have anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tanei Darby. I live at South Marshall Street.
Thank you.
And in my canvassing today, some of the issues that we ran into, like Lourdes came up here and spoke in Spanish, and some of yous were clueless. That's how some of the residents felt when they got those letters, because they were not in Spanish. And luckily David Cruz was with me, so, you know, we were able to team up against this effort to try to get to some of these residents. Some of the issues that they faced were, there was an elderly woman in a wheelchair. She owned the home, so her daughter was like, come in and talk to her. And when Grid One came, apparently they tried to remove the valve and could not, but it started leaking, and they let it leak. And so then she had to pay a private plumber to come in who was able to remove it. So she was like, so you can call them now and tell them to come back. I was like, well, that's not what we're here to do. But, you know, I gave her the number and I told her to call again. Then we had another Hispanic resident who had no clue. He was a renter, same thing. They came in, told them the valves had to be replaced. He has gotten no response from his landlord, and he had two young children in the home. So these are some of the things that these residents are facing when we were knocking on their doors. They were very receptive. A lot of them let, let us come in and talk to us. One lady did have hers changed, but her, her address was still on the list. I gave them my card, wrote the information on the back of my card, so I do have residents still calling me about the issue. So I just kind of wanted to let you know what took place when we went out canvassing today to hopefully try to resolve this for, for the residents.
Thank you again, Tanei. We are aware of some of the issues related to the valves, because when we replace the meters, if there is a problem with the valve, then it is incumbent upon the homeowner to do that. And we also know that we have unresponsive landlords, and we need to work through this process to make sure that our tenants are being cared for and landlords are upholding their end of their responsibility. So again, I appreciate you going out. If you have specific follow-up questions, Millsy, I'm going to ask for you to continue to be the contact with Tanei related to specific residents. We'll funnel that information through Department of Public Works and the team that's working on this and make sure. I'm also going to be following up about capacity, because right now we sent out those last water shut-off notices. And one of the things we have to check on is just Grid One's capacity right now to be able to be responding, because we are getting a lot of calls. It is, it has taken this last step to threaten shutting off water to get responses after literally six or seven attempts, door hangers, the whole nine yards. I'll also say that is my understanding that the door hangers that we are using in our neighborhoods are bilingual on both sides, English and Spanish, not, you understand what I'm saying. And so are they being utilized yet, Millsy? So they're out. So we are addressing the, some of the language barriers that you're, you're speaking to in the, in the, in the tagging of specific doors. We are asking tenants if they can let us in for us to be able to access. We can go in and change it without having the landlord present so that we can make sure that water is not shut off.
Right, but when, but when, one of the specific residents, because, you know, they might be from another country or kind of leery to just be letting people in.
I totally understand.
So yeah, we ran into all of these things when we were speaking to residents.
Yes.
With their concerns.
And ultimately, the responsibility is on the landlord and the, and the property owner. So we're, we're at the final, we're at the final stretch, and we're just going to keep working as diligently as we can, being as respectful as we can to the tenants, because ultimately, this is not their problem. But it will be.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Can I ask Tanei a question? Have you run into anyone that's illiterate, that does not, they just can't read or write? I mean, because to put tags on there, there are people that are illiterate, they, or maybe they're blind, or maybe they're elderly and they can't see well.
Well, the one gentleman, the last house we went to on South Ann Street, I think it was 20 South Ann Street, he was an elderly man in a wheelchair. He didn't even remember whether he'd gotten one or anything. He has a son that works third shift, so he was asleep at the time we came to the home. So I told him again, gave him my card with the number on the back, and told him to have his son to please call me. And again, he spoke Hispanic, so David had to speak to him. But yeah, like, he had no idea whether they had gotten letters or anything.
Thank you, Tanei.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am, I saw your hand up first.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Heidi. I live at 519 Spruce Street. I am here because I wanted to provide my input on the public art project at Uwe Plaza. I've been kind of following the story on, you know, like, from sources like Tim from Lancaster Online or Lancaster Newspapers, the minutes for the agenda, the council meeting and regular city council, you know, meetings like here. And so I don't have a lot of information because it's been limited, I feel like, for the public. And so my first question, which I asked yesterday at a regular city council committee meeting, I wanted to know or understand why are Chris Dollars leaving the city? Based on the minutes from city council meeting in November, the Uwe Legacy Committee proposed or presented a project and funding it. I'd like to understand how that project, how it was inadequate or not fit for that plaza, because the art proposed is actually, or the plaza is named after Barney Uwe. And so I would think that any art that goes there represents who he is as a person and as an individual. And I'd like to ask how city council will ensure that the project manager gets that across, or at least is able to give us an answer as to how that will be incorporated into the art, or into whatever art that is approved. My second question is, who will be responsible for collecting and gathering public input for the project? And then also, who will be responsible for providing a report of the input that is collected from the public? I have experience on serving in a committee for an outreach project in the southeast neighborhood. Out of all the candidates that were reviewed, there wasn't a single candidate from locally, from Lancaster. And the artist that was hired for that project no longer lived here. He lived in Philadelphia, and as a result, he was having issues gathering input from the southeast neighborhood because they didn't know who he was. And so the committee sat down, tried to figure out a way of how the artist could collect data, because nobody was, nobody wanted to give him data as to what kind of project should go in the southeast, because he no longer lived here. And so I'm not saying that, you know, like, city residents will react or be, be the same way as residents in the southeast, but how, how will, how will city council or the public art manager ensure that we don't run into the same issue? And then, you know, I just want to express that, again, I hope that any art that is approved is actually, it actually represents the person that the plaza is named after. I think that everybody in Lancaster, local artists, they're not against the art going there. I firmly believe that because they're also looking at ways of what other art could go there if this firm doesn't represent who Lancaster is. They're also finding, looking for other options. So it seems like the public art manager is looking for art, and they're also looking for art. So how about we have those efforts, like, how about we merge those efforts instead of like doing double the work? But I feel like the city government needs to make sure that both sides come together. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Heidi.
April 19, 21 North Mulberry, 253-255 West King Street. I actually hate the laboringness, but we waited 45 years for this opportunity to make a contribution to this piece of property. And we have done a lot of research, and a lot of things have been not done properly. There are minutes from March 28th, and it says, Joe Davis manager's project list, which was not part of the minutes, she has a projects list.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you lift the mic?
Sure. Thank you very much. The Joe Davis had a manager's project list, and that it's not regularly reviewed by the board or included with the minutes. So there's two separate lists, her project list and the minutes. And what was added to the end of the report, it said, Joe Davis discussed the potential for public art on the facade of the new library parking garage at Lancaster Square. This was March 28th. Currently exploring how to work a project into construction costs or work on art applied with construction after it's complete. Design of the building is to start this month. J.D., Joanna Davis, is working with a consultant on a short list of artists that could be a good match for the project. So even in March, her idea was to go outside of the community that has built this city. If you take out all the artists, which includes music, visual arts, and all the dance, you're going to be left with a lot of vacancies. You're going to be losing the millennials that are, you know, banging on doors to buy The real estate is getting three or four bids higher than ask price. This was not the flavor of the city 32 years ago. Okay? So we have this precious gem that's just growing. At my Art Center for First Friday, we had artists coming from Massachusetts, and they're, they are renting a home because they want to buy a home here, from Massachusetts. That was one couple I talked to. The other couple was from northern New Jersey, just outside New York. This is happening on a continual basis. So why are we trying to upset the art community that has built this wonderful city? Now, again, on a public art document, it says Lancaster Public Art focuses on blah, 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 which I talked about, and magnify Lancaster's distinct sense of place. And R and R has a habit of branding their concept onto cities, and we can prove it to you on their website. What they gave to you was a cut and paste of what they've done in Rhode Island, what they've done in Miami, what they've done in Barcelona. It is just their style. We might as well have McDonald's yellow arches, okay? Because what they'd like is for people to see their art, not to integrate it with the community, not to be sensitive to our heritage, not to be sensitive of how distinct we are. We are losing, we're, we're losing the big picture.
I don't want to interrupt you. If you can finish up.
I don't think, I don't think any of you, including the mayor, want to have this go down as your legacy, because it won't be a positive one. I am trying to help bridge what is being railroaded through, and I don't know what the, why is there, why is there such a rush? Once you take out bond money, from what my lawyer told me, you have three years to do the construction. Why are we in such a perilous time constraint that we have to approve R and R's participation in our city? We, we, as a group of artists, are willing to go with what was approved. We, as a group of artists, are willing to go with what was approved by the Historic Board, the Heritage Commission, allow Hamel's facade to go. Put the money in a market, a money market bearing interest escrow accounts. It doesn't have to leave our city. We have the talent. We were at Claire Brothers today, and at Tate Towers. They do work around the world.
April, respectfully, I'd ask you to finish up, just to be fair to everybody else.
This is a big mistake. Okay, the last comment? When Apollo 11 was on its way to put the first man on the moon, do you know that 90% of their excursion was off course? And when they realized they were not going to make their target, they had to get the people on the ground, all the scientists, all the mathematicians, every nook and cranny of a person that was a talent. And they had to decide how to put it at the mid-course correction. And I am begging you, take back this project. Don't dismiss it. It is your responsibility. You are accountable to us. Our mayor is accountable to us. And take the project in hand, put a mid-course correction on it. Nothing's been signed yet, and we know that for a fact. Don't be pushing us and telling us lies.
Thank you, April. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else, Stephen? Good evening.
All right. So my name is Tammy Rojas, and I live on the 200 block of West Vine Street.
Good evening.
As a member of Poor People First PA and a member of the Pennsylvania Poor People's Campaign Coordinating Committee, I couldn't very well not say something about this whole issue around the water meters and the water shut-offs. I just don't even understand how that became an option. I don't understand what are the purpose of these neighborhood groups if we're not going to utilize them early on. I mean, I think it's great that Tane and all them are out there knocking doors, but it shouldn't be because of threats of a water shut-off. Water is a basic human right. So to take that away from us, you're stealing one of our basic human rights from us. That really, honestly, should have never, ever been a thought in anyone's mind to use that as a form to get this project finished. There are many ways that we could have went about and done this. Shutting the water off of people seriously not have been an option, and I don't understand how that was even a choice. Our folks that have been organizing and building a local Poor People's Campaign Collaborative here have been organizing for the past year, and we've come here many times and have spoken with you. We have shared multiple stories around poverty. You have heard Tane share examples of what people are going through because of this water shut-off debacle. I fear that you still are not listening. And this is just, it's really honestly frustrating and heartbreaking that this seems to be the case. I really just don't even understand how that was an option at all. I just, there's no thing that you could honestly say to me that I would sit here and agree with you, that water shut-offs would have been the answer to get the final project done. Because I had several different ideas popping through my head that we could have went about and done this. So I seriously don't understand. And as far as the development at 101 NQ and the art project and everything that's going on down there, I mean, we're seriously missing the whole bigger picture of even what's going on down with that debacle. You know, I was encouraged by folks that I'm connected with in the Poor People's Campaign to write a piece about basically an untold story of what's going on around that development that's taken place over the course of year. And I have put that together. And it's honestly very depressing and upsetting that I feel like Barney's legacy is not being recognized in the way that it should. When I decided to kind of, writing this piece, I looked up who he was in more detail, other than what people were sharing in the paper and whatnot. And he was somebody who was born into poverty, and he was a tremendous athlete and was able to become successful. And so I feel like if you're going to do something that's going to honor Barney and that plaza, the plaza that's now named after him, it should be art that represents the poor and dispossessed, the art that represents him, because he is one of us. He is somebody who lived in poverty, who was oppressed, he was a man of color. It just doesn't make any sense to me how we can sit there and do things like remove the bus stops, remove the bus shelters, constantly have harassment when we're down there feeding the homeless, the derogatory comments I hear in regards to the homeless. I'm really seriously, honestly disappointed. And the worst thing that really was like the nail in the coffin, that really told us plain as day that no matter how many times people want to sit there and reassure us that we're going to be welcome in that public library, that we're welcome in our own public downtown? The fact that that block was closed off about nine days after the vote went through for that project by invite only. Do you know how much of a slap in the face that was to the poor and dispossessed in this community? As the people were sitting down there, enjoying their drinks and celebrating the grand opening of 101 NQ, when we are constantly losing something over that project, and we are constantly being hurt by the choices you guys make. We need you to take a step back and think twice. And because of how this is going with the water meter, I have already asked questions in regards to that lead abatement project. I have concerns. We really seriously need to take a step back and slow down a little bit and think a lot harder, because people have different abilities, people have language barriers, there's a lot of things that should have been taken into consideration when reaching out to the community about that project.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Tammy.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll go to the report of the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Lancaster has prided itself on civil discourse about a myriad of issues. This is a good thing, and it sets us apart from many, many communities, including our nation's capital. Most recently, there have been accolades about the robust conversation regarding public art, the ability for all sides to engage in a vigorous debate, as demonstrated even here tonight, at public meetings, on social media, letters to the editor, neighborhood groups, and so on. The fact that we can have these conversations is good. And because we are a community that is a work in progress, I want to take a few minutes to address some of the elements of this discourse that have no place in the continued conversation about public art or any other issues that brings forth a variety of deeply held opinions. First, it is not okay to personally attack individual employees of the City of Lancaster as they carry out the work of this administration. I ran for this office. I am the elected public official, and I put myself in a position to be subject to those personal attacks. City staff did not. It is not okay to imply that the Public Art Advisory Board should not have given additional consideration to an artist that is a native Spanish speaker. 40% of our city is Hispanic. The city is doing more, and as comments from tonight, we need to continue to do even more to make sure that all residents are connected and engaged with the work of this city, from water meter replacement, lead abatement efforts, public art, neighborhood engagement, all of it. We cannot both celebrate diversity and dismiss it out of hand. We are better than this. It is not okay to say that council has broken the law as it relates to the decision that has been made. This is not factual. Facts may not matter in other places, but they matter here. City staff are working in good faith to address the lessons learned from the public art process, including how to ensure that public art interrelates with the existing processes and procedures, including the Historical Commission, and make those recommendations to council, as was part of the decision that was made in November. We are also looking at how to ensure that public engagement happens even earlier, in this case, in the selection of a consultant in certain instances. I'm not sure, actually, that the city has ever engaged the public in selecting a consultant for any project. We have selected consultants who then go out and do community engagement, which is part of this process, but I'm not sure that we've actually engaged the public in selecting a consultant. And so we need to look at that, and how that would work, and under what circumstances we would actually do that. But we have heard that message loud and clear. And as we have done in other situations over the last two years, we will learn and grow, ensuring that we continue to do better each and every time. It bears repeating that the public art rendering that people have seen in LNP and so on is a concept. There are concerns, as even expressed tonight, that R&amp;R is going to bring a similar design to Lancaster as what has appeared in other communities. And if that happens, it is on us. The administration is developing a robust and exciting public engagement plan to give any and all interested stakeholders opportunities to contribute to the final design of the artwork over a period of many months next year. Ideas about how this art can reflect the namesake of the plaza, Olympian Barney Uwe, have already come to my desk. I am excited to see what others' ideas take shape. The council has approved 151 North Queen Land Development, including the public art design concept for the facade of the parking garage. R&amp;R Studios has been selected as the artist to execute the work. These decisions have been made. But the decision about the final design has not been made. It is my wish that as we turn the page to a new year, we commit ourselves to ensuring an inclusive process with a diverse and abundant set of ideas flowing into this creative process. We have an opportunity to fully realize a vision of Uwe Plaza deserving of its name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I reported to the President of the Council. I have not much tonight, just want to thank the members of the public who took the time to come out to our budget meeting on Saturday. I know it was a long meeting for some, but it was really neat to see some new faces at our budget meeting. It was five hours long, and to see the department heads take the time to come out and really talk about their departments was something that was terrific. And I think it, I really hope going forward with the new council, it's a tradition that continues. I think it's a really good thing for the public. Any council comments?
I just, go ahead.
No, please, Counsel Ballantyne.
Counsel Ballantyne.
I just want to second everything President Reichenbach said. For all those departments that provided the information, the highlights of last year, what they're planning for next year, they did a tremendous job, and I hope that next year, we have more participants from the audience and from the community. It's great information to hear, so again, to all the department heads, thank you, and to all the audience members. It was a pleasure to have you.
Great. I assume, as a member of the public, you're going to come next year. We're going to sit down together, just sit in the other part of the room. It'd be great. Counsel Smith-Wadeau.
Yeah, I just want to comment briefly on last night's meeting of the Public Art Advisory Board, not to...
Microphone on, just to make sure everybody can hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. Just wanted to comment briefly on last night's meeting of the Public Art Advisory Board, not to relitigate anything that's been, that's sort of been brought up, but just to say that that was, it was an intense meeting, and I think that because that is an all-volunteer board that doesn't frequently get a lot of public comment or visitation, that that board, often volunteer boards, aren't used to the level of the intense passion that our public brings to meetings like those. But just wanted to reiterate that that is, that is how the sausage is made, and indeed, that's the way it's supposed to go often. So I left, it got a little intense, but I did left the meeting feeling that it had gone broadly the way it was supposed to. Say that out loud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you have a comment, Counsel?
Yes. I wanted to thank those that are passionate, that have brought forth their concerns, and you are correct. I am a city council employee of the community that pay taxes mostly, but all the residents of Lancaster City, and I really appreciate you standing up for yourselves.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just lastly, real quick, I do want to thank Tane, but not just you, but all the other people who did go out. I know that's not why you did it, but I want to thank you very much. You didn't do it for the reason to get thanked, but you deserve it. And I do think it says something about our community, that the first question that was asked when the situation came up was, "How can we help?" And it was organic from neighborhood groups. And I hear some of the comments about, you know, getting the public groups engaged earlier, and that's something we can always get better at. So that has not fallen on deaf ears. But sometimes you have to recognize the goodness that's happening right in front of you, seeing you guys out in the rain, in the wind, knocking on doors. You're not getting paid to do that. You're not expected to do that. You're doing that because you care about people, and that is a great thing to see. And it helps. It's going to help people, and you should be really, really commended for that, because we didn't have to tell you to do it, you just did it. Thank you for going. You are appreciated.
I lost my Eagles umbrella that I've had for eight years knocking on these doors.
So what you're saying, it was an extremely successful day? That's right.
Hey now, hey now.
If you can't see the Eagles tie that I'm wearing right now.
Excuse me, sir.
Okay. So before anybody says anything else positive about a team other than Eagles, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. Have a good night.